Eric, would you please, Reverend Hopkins? Would everybody stand for a prayer, please, and then we'll be able to lead.
Good morning, everyone. It's a beautiful winter morning, huh? Probably just thanking today for our leaders, both national, state, and local. Thank you, God, for opposition, because it's opposition that makes us keen and hones our skills, that we not be apathetic, but that we be on our game. And I thank you this morning in this agenda and our local government that there will be friendship among even disagreements. And I thank you, Lord, for your very presence in our life. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. I call this meeting of the Fayette County Board of Commissioners to order. Plague for Regents.
Plague for Regents is a part of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Wake up, boys.
It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor, say aye. Three ayes. All right. Mr. Coram? Our department supervisor.
Hi, Richard. How are you, sir?
I'm all right.
Good.
The first thing I'd like to get out of the way is over the milling, so I brought it last time. I've got three different codes on getting them fresh. Sorry about if you don't get one. I missed, I lost the other copy. Unless you got it from last time, I can't remember. I'd like to go with that prolonged care landscaping. They're the cheapest out of the three. And what that is, is the millings that we've got, they've got big chunks in them, and they don't lay out with the big chunks. We want to give them down to a 53 size, so we can lay them out a lot better and pack them.
So will you be grinding them as you haul them out to use them, or so that they don't repack, or?
Yes.
Or we, will they grind it all ahead of time?
We'll probably grind it a little ahead of time, and it ain't going to really hurt much, other than it'd be fresh to get into. We don't want to set overseas in my end movement. That stuff's going to get out of there soon as we get going. So it won't be much to worry about on that part.
Do you have that already in the line item to be able to cover that?
We were just talking about that last time. Basically, what was that, a new, we're going to make a new line item for that.
Yeah.
Service contract, I think's what it is. Service contract.
But he said, yeah, then he'll transfer money from an existing line item.
Transfer.
Yeah.
You're going to use the existing budget.
Right.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve the prolonged care price of $3.50, I assume, per ton.
Yes.
Is that a closed contract for $21,000, or are they estimating?
Could it go up or down?
No, right there is this dead price, right there, of what's now 6,000 ton, that's what.
You're going to do 6,000 ton, period?
Period, yep.
Okay, all right. For $21,000, then?
Yes.
Okay. I'd make that motion to approve that.
It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And then, on our trucks, I went with Mack, Stoops International, and Freightliner. Everything's been turned in, they got the specs, we went through all the specs and everything. I'm waiting for the information to come back on the pricing, and we're going with the state bids on that, so, and once I get them, I'll bring them in, we'll go through them. What else we got? 700 North, it's probably, we've got a big can up there we're getting ready to put in. Probably going to take a couple days. That's a busy road, just before we come into Bentonville, and between Manlo and your 500 West, there where Rich Dickfond lives at.
I saw you had that marked, is it cave?
Yes, bottom's out of it. 57 by 38, 50 footer flat bottom. So big, I'm going to have them deliver it out there, but I think in the long run, it would save us if we did. I can't see why we can't do it. We got the equipment to do it, and that's what we're going to do. But it'd probably take us a couple days to get it in there, maneuver around and stuff.
Then you need to be sure and notify the general public that that road's going to be closed and we need to, etc.
We will.
How many days?
It probably, we may get it in one day, but I can't guarantee one day, so.
Are you going to go back with flowable fill around it because of it being so big, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, being heavily traveled through there, the more we get it set up, the better off we are.
Richard, if you're going to use flowable fill, is there any way that we can get asphalt put back over it immediately, instead of like we normally do?
Yeah.
Because there's not going to be any settling with the flowable fill.
Right. Yeah, we could do that. I don't see why we couldn't do that, I mean, for that route anyways.
Yeah, because of the traffic on it.
And then, I like to remind everybody every time I get up here, your 300, 200 sites, it's going to be a lot of work out there this summer. We've got a lot of cans to replace. Sites will be a headache for a lot of people because of high school, and between high school and Harrietburg, but we've got fiber optic line, we've got to go out there and find that before we can do much work. There's a cord we've got to replace right there in the same area, we've got a ditch right there in that same area. It's a lot of post hole digging to find the fiber optic, but we'll get it done.
Make Jim do it.
Well, I tried that. They won't do it. I don't understand that. Usually, me and Warren talked about that, and then Jim, I talked to Jim a little bit about it, there was nothing in writing where they said they've got to be there to watch us do it. But I had a time trying to find out who owned the line. But it's funny, if you cut the thing.
You cut it, you'll find out.
You'll find out who got it, yeah.
Real quick, that's what I said.
Well, they put that line in out there without any permission. They asked for it, and we never did give it to them, but they put it in anyway.
Yeah, I guess it's a feed to Reshville, I'm not too sure if that's accurate or not, but I remember it was in there. Other than that, we got our spray patchers out, and, so the tank's been working out great, the new tank we've got. That's about it.
Wonderful.
Busy summer. Unless anybody's got anything.
Thank you, Richard.
Warren, you say you don't have anything for us today?
He left.
I think he's escaped the country. Michael King? You're going to have to sit over here someplace where I can see that you're here.
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
Don't have anything for approval, but just, early voting's been going on for a week, we haven't had any problems, everything's been going smoothly. And the new court recorder is being installed as of this moment, they're actually upstairs right now. So hopefully by the end of the day, that will be in place, and that will remove one big time bomb that we've had going on for like the last two years, where if it failed, our Superior Court was shut down. So, new computer, new system, it's going to be the same system as the Circuit Court, so it's very easy, much easier to use and much more stable. So, it'll help the attorneys as well, because it'll use the same player for all, both courts, instead of multiple different systems of software to do the same thing. So, that's all I've got. So, anything questions for me, or?
No, thank you very much for what you do.
Let me ask Jim.
Mr. Reese, can you give us a report on Bridge 25, please?
County Road 300 is now closed, we closed it last Thursday. They're setting up at this point to do their pump around so that they can work on the foundations. We've had a couple of issues out there, the pump that they had designed for, brought out wasn't big enough, so.
That's math.
And the weather hasn't helped either. But they've got a 12-inch pump out there right now, that they, I just came in from there, and they're setting it up, and hopefully yet today, they can get the dam set up down in there, get that pump running, all the erosion control is in place, get all of our permits. So, right now, 300 should be closed, or can be closed, up till the first week, I believe, of November. Hopefully, we'll be ahead of schedule and get that sooner, but plan on November at this point, so.
Jim, the demolition of the bridge, where's those products?
That'll go to, they've got two sites approved. They've got Derbyshire in Franklin County, they're on 52, and they've got IMI up here on US 40.
Okay.
That has to go to a commercial site, or an approved site.
So otherwise, we couldn't use it for any?
Be nice if we could.
Why does it have to do with that, commercial site?
They ran into one of them when they started this stuff, because we was allowing them to haul it to places to, for washouts along rivers and all. Your Army Corps of Engineers and IDM got involved in that, and decided that so many of those things was going to what they called wetlands, and you cannot put stuff in a wetland area without establishing another wetland, and I believe you got to double, whatever you take out, you got to double. So, at that point, with the permits and everything, you're opening yourself up for liability issues, so you're just better off going to a commercial site.
If I understand it right, Jim, I thought Jerry always said that that was a combination earth, bridge, concrete bridge.
That bridge is, that's an arch bridge, it'll more than likely have fill inside of it when we go to break.
Will that fill stay on the site, like there's some washouts?
We'd like to see what's in there.
Yeah.
It's possible that it could, depending on what they used.
We could make that area a lot, we could help.
We could help that area.
Some property owners there.
We got issue, we got agencies that we got to answer to, with that being federal money and everything. You don't want to jeopardize your federal funding.
Right.
So, we got to play, play by the rules, but yes, if there's something in there that's suitable, there's a spec in the NDOT standards and specifications, where certain materials can be used within a project.
Okay.
And we just got to see what's in there.
Okay, all right.
Hard to tell what they might have used back there.
We've got you watching over it for us.
Well, thank you, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, so.
Are you going to continue the emails, the weekly emails?
Yes, yes.
I appreciate that, that, and it's, which I understand.
What I do, all my projects, I try and keep everybody up to date on what's going on, and I'll provide those weekly reports, and we may end up, as the project progresses here, we might start having a bi-weekly progress meeting. And if you've got any questions, my office is over here beside Reed Boozing.
Okay.
Stop in any time.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate what you're doing, sir. And I've got Cam Sparks on the agenda, but I haven't seen Cam. Mr. Gray's not going to be here today. Would appreciate everybody remembering him in prayer, he's got some problems with his knees, bone spurs on them or something, and the doctor told him to stay off his feet for three days, so keep building your prayers. Mr. Ellis, I saw you sneak in, do you have anything for us today?
This is Cut. Good morning, everyone. I sent you an email about, excuse me, about the lock situation, got that changed. I have a key in my office, I gave one to 911, and I have one for you to keep here at the courthouse. I spoke to SBA, the company that runs the tower, they are massive, I had no idea how big they were. If you look at Verizon's phone coverage area, their tower coverage is about the same.
About the same.
And we had a nice long talk about security, they said they had no problem cutting into the chain, put our lock in there, and they said, which I really loved this, we talked about overall security, being on county property, and said to me that, if you run into any more problems, any issues, they give us permission to take everybody else's lock on, put our lock on there, and anyone have to go through us to get into the tower site, so that gives us total security. So, I really appreciate that. I'll be going to each department for NIMs updates, that's mandatory to have to do that. It'll be what classes and training they've had. For the line person, there are levels, and then for the command, the first and second in command, there are classrooms that they need to take, that's critical on scene. That brings to a conversation with the National Guard. The state has changed the programming for that. Generally, if there was a major disaster, I would go to you, the commissioners, to say, "Look, we're going outside our resources, we need to go to them." They've now changed that to where it's a one-on-one relationship with emergency management, home maintenance, security, and the National Guard. I've set up a dialogue with the local National Guard, they have been in great contact, and we had near flooding, so they're ready for that, so that's a great benefit to us. Working with, I'm rewriting the mitigation plan, and in that, I want to look at adding conversations about the roads are being flooded. Is there something we can do about that? Long range, anything we can put into that plan that may say to the federal government, here's a critical area for us, and if funding ever does become available down the road, that is something that will be in the plan, and any aspect of that is better to be in there. All offices now have panic buttons.
I'm sorry, Adrian, can you dwell on that, I mean, can you expand on what you just said about road flooding?
Yes, like on 440 out there, where everything goes under. Where Gary Govan told me one time, a lot of that came from rerouting of a river north of there.
Okay.
And what it would take, and Jim would be, you know, great to get into this conversation about what would it take to raise the level of that road above that point, to where the road with cans, whatever, underneath that would eliminate that problem, that you would not have traffic blocked, people running into it. People have this tendency, if I can make it through there, next thing you know, tow trucks are there, which brings up something else that, I'm going to see if Betty's in, I'm going to talk to her. The last flood, I went out, the gate had been opened, and I think we need to look at the possibility of making that, possibly another gate on the other side, making it possible to get through there. What I got to see, and it took a second to register, because the wire was deep all the way around it, there was a tow truck sitting up on a little hill, the gate had been open, and I went back, closed, and then hit me. This guy opened it, waiting for somebody to get stuck, so he could go out there and tow it now. And when I put two and two together, I turned around, went back, he was going, you could see him leaving way on the north end of it, and I thought, that's pretty disgusting. So, looking at the possibilities of raising those roads, I don't know what the cost would be, I don't know what the engineering studies would be, but things like that, I'd like to get into that plan.
But if you, what you're saying is, if we've got those kind of issues labeled in the plan?
Yes.
If there are federal monies come available?
They'll help us.
Those, those projects would be first looked at?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's what I was trying to.
Plans are the key. If you've got it mentioned, if you have it in there as an idea, we've looked at this, and then down the road, just like the NIMs. One department did not have their NIMs at one time, and applied for a grant, and that was denied.
Adrian, what is NIMs?
National Incident Management System. It is a language among first responders. During Hurricane Katrina, it started, that you have a lot of people coming together that don't speak the same language. If you hear on a radio, you hear 10-4, 10-9, 10-20, well, those are 10 codes, they're signal codes. If you say 10-9, that says repeated, I didn't understand what you said. If you say signal 9, that means go on back, I don't need you. Can you imagine being at a bank, and there's a bank robber, and somebody says, "I didn't hear you," and you said signal 9, that tells all the other cops to go back? Well, NIMs changed that to using common language. When we were deployed in the task force to Hurricane Sandy, you're talking about running in, working with people from 12 different states, and Richmond and Congrisville don't have the same codes, so that kind of eliminates that, plus there's a structure about how you go about things. Within that structure, there is an identification of the type of a disaster, their type. What I'm doing as far as the data collection, is seeing what level of training the people have had, and then how they're equipped to deal with the type. There are five types, five being the average, everyday thing, one being the worst nightmare you could ever think of. Within that, is something called interoperability, and Gary, we've, you know, we've been down that road, talking about how do you communicate with the radios, and what's that structure? It takes guesswork out, and puts in a very straightforward method. I have a presentation I'd like to give you sometime about NIMs, all, you know, to the commissioners and all, so, probably it's about 40 minutes, and maybe sometime in a meeting, we can structure that and do it after the meeting, if you'd like. The other thing is the panic alarms, I reprogrammed the system, every office has a panic button now. And when 911 gets the equipment upgraded, changed, and cleaned, we need to do our communications testing, get that back, finish our communications plan, and then get all the offices on a schedule to where they get more comfortable with the buttons. And they start, we have a schedule to where quarterly or whatever, they test their own button with 911. And everybody gets on the same page and understands that, how this works. We've had one incident, everything worked seamlessly. Within a 40-minute period, there's an incident in the court, panic button was activated, law enforcement was involved, and 40 minutes later, the guy was in handcuffs, so, system's working.
Very good.
Other than that, we need to get back on the safety committee and look at training for employees. So, that's it.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Here, copy, be here, we're here.
Colin, do you have anything for us?
Unless you want to talk about the program. My preliminary review of this, without doing any research, I think it's talking about all members.
All members?
I think so.
So you, in your opinion, we should?
Not be appointing members who are affiliated with the same business entity.
Okay.
But I can review it more and get back to you if you'd like, but just, down with that today, that's where I think I'm down. And I actually checked the Indiana code, and it's worded similarly, but it's all for member requirements, not just the members that are keepers, so.
And Mayo, we have two letters of resignation, one from Amanda Stevens at Woodbury Janes, and one from Jennifer Bador. They're both members of the Fayette County Tourism Board, or were, and they have both resigned, and we have going to reappoint Lindsey Brooks. I assume what you're talking about here with Colin is whether we can use Heather or not? And what was his determination?
He thinks that it's talking about all five members. None of the five could be employed by the same employer.
Okay.
So we cannot use Heather? We wouldn't be able to use Heather in that situation.
She has the same employer, even though it's not direct supervisor, they're both employed by the same?
Same business entity.
Okay. Mrs. Hammons is the president right now of the Tourism Committee, and they had requested that Heather could be appointed, and Heather is also employed by Union Savings and Loan, same as Amy, and according to the Indiana code, we cannot use Heather. I thank you for being here, and I thank you for your willingness to serve Heather. And Lindsey Brooks isn't here right now, but she is the other appointment that we are going to make, and she works at the middle school, so she probably will not be here until after school's out today.
All right.
Can I make a motion and a vote?
With, with that in mind, the ordinance, the tourism ordinance, would like for us to have two of the representatives of that board from, from our motels, inns, the campgrounds, if possible, but it does state that if no one is willing to serve, that?
Right, it's available.
Yeah, if they are available. Those that have been involved with the Tourism Board, doesn't, they haven't been able to find anybody else other than Heather that would be interested from those organizations. With that in mind, I'd make a motion that we appoint, now I've lost my, I'm going to get back to my notes, Lindsey Brooks to serve out the remainder of the term of Mrs. Bador.
Yes, sir.
And I would make, also, to that, add to that, Daniel Phelps to serve out the term of Mrs. Stevens. His name was brought to me by Amy as a recommendation. She feels that he would be a great benefit to their board, and I'd make those two.
Oh, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the appointment of Lindsey Brooks and Daniel Phelps?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain on Mr. Phelps, but I will say yes on Lindsey Brooks.
But they'll serve out the terms?
Yes.
Of those two? Jane, do you, I think?
The first is at the end of this year, Amanda's ends at the end of next year.
Yeah, okay, all right. So hopefully they can, I know Amy's been working hard, and the current board has been working hard to get their agenda going, and hopefully these two will make a great addition to that board as well, so.
Is there a representative here from the Whitewater Valley Railroad? We also have a request from Jeff Rhodes with Mapping Solutions to use our GIS data, and they will pay us $250, $750 for a one-time delivery of map layers.
Motion to approve the use of our GIS.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve claims and payroll?
I have one other thing with business, or new business, that wasn't on the agenda. Our surplus vehicles that we have from the Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
I believe that Joey is going to submit three Durangos for, as surplus vehicles. I have spoke with all three of the volunteer fire departments, they have spoke of interest in using those vehicles, continuing to use those vehicles as emergency vehicles. I wondered, Colin, do you see a problem with us doing that, just like we did the property up there, the north end, conveying those? up there, the north end, conveying those for a dollar to those agencies?
Off the top of my head, no, but I'd like to chance a double check it.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we allow that to happen pending Colin's approval on that issue.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Sounds like a good use of our used vehicles. That's one for Glenwood, Everton, and Bend Bell.
Yeah.
One for each fire department.
They've all three spoke of interest, if they can use them. If they can use them, I think, I think we could, we should accommodate their needs.
Sounds like a good plan to keep them in the county and keep them in the city to help our situation here. Thank you.
I'll move to approve the claim and payroll.
Second.
Been moved from second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We'll sign the paperwork, and then we will adjourn.
Lane and the County Highway Department. There was a water issue on 300 North, that any amount of rain at all, there was water coming across 300 North. And last year, last fall, Tom, he made an effort as the property owner to correct that issue, and with the cooperation of Steve Lane, who he was employed by Tom, worked on that issue, and cooperation with the Highway Department, that was fixed. We've had some heavy rain since, there is absolutely no water coming across 300 North, and that is a prime example of public and private entities working together to solve an issue.
Took a little bit.
It did take a little bit of coordination between everybody, but Steve Lane did a fantastic job, he did all the excavating work, the Highway Department helped out with materials and whatnot, some materials, but it was just a great cooperation among everybody, and I appreciate that.
It's always good when a problem is solved.
Yeah. But that had been an issue for quite some time out there, Richard can verify that.
I can too, it was before I started.
Was it, okay. Sometimes things work slow, but if we just continue to work together, we can get it We have another issue on, on another situation where, out in that area, I hope we can work together with private landowner, and hopefully we can get a water issue solved out there too, so, as well. Is there just one thing? So much around.
Those were the first bunch.
I believe that GIs agreement needs signed, if it's all three of you were the first, the first thing you drafted up.
The first thing I picked up has to be signed?
Yeah, the back of that one.
Oh.
I think that's...
This is on the mapping.
Yeah. It's only used with GIS. That's the use of the GIS. Yes.
I'd make a motion that they adjourn that.
I'll second.
Been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Continue this adjournment, thank you.